Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so welcome to another meeting for the Board of Commissioners. Again, we are recording this. Well, first of all, let me start by saying the meeting is closed to the public. However, that being said, the public can call in using that number that was provided to the media and our website. And it is being recorded, both video and audio. Any awards or commendations? Seeing none. Acknowledgement of previous minutes from April 1st and April 6th.
I move we approve the minutes of April 6th and April 1st.
Second. Got a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any additions to the agenda? Okay, no additions. I am going to move the Sheriff's Office up to number one. We'll get there real quick. Any public input from recognition of visitors? That's not on the agenda? Going to say no. Okay, with that, Sergeant Roberts, I think you're probably up for the vehicle cage installation. Is that...
Sergeant Josh Roberts for the Sheriff's Office. So Commissioners, as you recall, last year we reinstated our K-9 program. And to that end, we needed to outfit a existing patrol vehicle with the equipment for the K-9, which included a new cage and some other equipment. The automatic door pop and that kind of stuff. We had the work done by ERS, and at the time, it was quoted at $49.79. And when we got approval, what we didn't realize is that there were some wiring issues that they ran into with how we ordered the vehicle initially versus how they needed to configure it. That wasn't known at the time. And so the actual bill came in at $65.39. And so we're asking for approval to pay ERS.
So I noticed that they did have it indicated on their estimate to do that work on the estimate. But were they not able to know what the vehicle was all about when they made their estimate? Because they knew they were going to have to change something there.
Right. So we ordered the vehicle from the factory with what's called road-ready package. And so Ford pre-wires a lot of this emergency equipment at the factory before it comes to us. And that was advantageous for us with our old outfitter. As a one-man operation, we got some of that work done ahead of time. ERS doesn't deal with road-ready. They rarely see a road-ready package because it's cheaper and more efficient for them to build these from the ground up. And so it wasn't anything that they thought to ask about. It wasn't anything that we knew that we needed to tell them about. Ultimately, had we known ahead of time, this cost would have been there. And we would have come to you guys ahead of time. It's just we didn't know until they got tearing into it and they went, oh, there's a road-ready package. Now, this is going to be more man-hours because they have to move some wiring and actually redo a lot of the wiring because it has to do with vehicle systems in addition to the emergency equipment. So there was just a lot of wiring that ended up having to be relocated. The K-9 cage actually would have fit over top of where all this road-ready wiring is and all the components. So if there was a repair, you wouldn't be able to get to this wiring, which is what necessitated them having to move it essentially.
So future cars, we won't order with the wiring already done?
Right. Future cars, they're going to build it from the ground up. They're going to know what's in there. This shouldn't be an issue going forward. It was just the stuff that we had, that they weren't involved in the wiring in, didn't know ahead of time. And we didn't know to communicate that to them. It was just kind of an oversight. But like I said, had we known ahead of time, this would have been the cost regardless because they would have known ahead of time, hey, we're going to have to remove wiring. And they would have put it in the estimate, so.
Is that heat alert to protect the dog?
I'm sorry?
Is that heat alert to protect the dog?
Yes.
That's cool.
Yes.
You ought to have one for children.
Yeah, it's got an N-dash display for both the front and the back section, or for both back sections, the prisoner and the K-9 side of things. And it tells what the temperature is. And it's got an alarm that if the temperature goes too high, it signals the officer. Let's say he's in the office and the dog's out in the car or on a call or something, it sends him an alert, hey, temperature's getting up there, so.
Wow, that's neat. Well, I move we approve the payment.
Second. Motion's been made in second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That all you guys have?
That's it.
All right. Safe travels.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, Umatilla Basin Watershed Council presentation. Michael, are you on the phone? Oh, wait, he might be muted. Hang on, Michael. Apparently, there's some people that are muted. Okay, Michael, try it now.
Hey, morning Commissioners. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah, good morning.
How's it going?
Good, how are you doing?
Great. Yeah, thanks for your time. So yeah, just jogged the handout that I sent with the photos of the new bridge up there in Athena.
Well, I gotta say, I drive across that bridge at least twice a day. And I'm... It's nice. I mean, after standing on that bridge when we had the flood back in February, I couldn't be more happy with that bridge.
Absolutely, yeah. You live up there, so you know you don't need photos, huh? And we, of course, you know, this being a fish project, overbuilt the bridge to try, you know, being more focused on the river, which costs more, you know? The main priority wasn't to cut costs. It was to give the river its space to do what it needs to do. Of course, we didn't think it was going to get tested so much right out of the gate with such a big water season. We were hoping that it wouldn't get, you know, be 10, 20 years. We didn't know. But yeah, that was a lot of water for us to immediately see how she performed. So we were very pleased.
Looks like a fish would have a lot of trouble coming up the creek right now from the pictures.
Yeah, and lucky, that's a stillhead stream, and they only run at high water.
Yeah.
Otherwise, they go tuck up, you know, way up Wobblers Creek Road up there and lay their eggs and such and then make their way in. Now, you know, stillhead is the only salmonite species that actually do multiple trips in and out. They don't grow upstream and die like a coho, chinook, and other fish. They'll come up that stream, lay their eggs way up in there, and next, high water in the spring, make their way out. So even when these streams dry up, they're still actually really, really great streams for fish. Yeah, so anyway, yeah, I wanted to send y'all some photos to wrap up that project. That was the big thing we were working on for, you know, really about two and a half years, almost three leading up to it. And we got this wrapped up. We've been looking around the county, of course, already. Me and Tom have chatted over the years because we're kind of working off the state priority list that I always talk about in these presentations that are, you know, culverts and other bridge issues and such that pose a fish passage barrier. But, you know, if a fish can't get through, it typically means it's a flood issue, a potential flood issue in the future with sediment buildup as well. So last grant cycle, y'all supported a technical assistant application grant for replacing the county-owned Stanley Creek culvert. And so I wanted to report back on this presentation that we received that grant fund. And so we're currently moving forward with a design. And it's really a little slow right now because of all this at-home stuff. So once we get the design really rolling at 15, 30 percent, we're going to come back to Tom and try to see what kind of structure the county actually wants to own there, whether it's a bridge or a bigger culvert or a double culvert or a half, whatever we're... can all come to terms on. And otherwise, that's what we're focusing on right now, is just kind of going down these fish and flood priority issues by the state and trying to secure the funds to knock them out.
Okay. So you said you're in contact with Tom, is that correct?
Yeah, he's going to be on the... Kind of have a big voice in what structure you are going to end up with. I know he has some thoughts on that. And he's kind of, you know, let me know what those were and that just to not get too far out ahead of them without... Since the county is going to have to own and maintain it. And so we're just hoping to get something that, you know, performs better for fish, performs better for flooding, and then, you know, we'd like to make it prettier, too, because a little bit of aesthetics in the community. It's already... It's a pretty road up out there, Stanley Creek, going up Yellow Jacket and stuff. So we're hoping to just build something that improves the community in a lot of ways.
Okay. Any questions for Michael?
No, that is a pretty bridge. I forgot how to say it.
Got anything? Nope. Okay, well, Michael, we don't have any questions for you. Do you have anything further for us?
No, I just wanted to update y'all on this project. And yeah, hey, we can't be there today. So I'm sure y'all are staying a little busy with all this. But thanks for taking the time to talk a little bit about water and fish. But I'll hopefully see y'all in person next time.
For sure. All righty. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Yeah, thanks a lot. Bye-bye.
Okay. Okay, Tom Fellows, the asphalt oil contract.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good. Tom Fellows, Public Works Director. Every year, we go out for emulsion contracts for our chip C-O-L. It's... We always request or have for CRS-2. And this year, wasn't any different. We went out for our requests. We got three responses for our requests from Albina, Idaho Asphalt, and Western States Asphalt. The apparent low was Western States Asphalt at $308 a ton. And that is our recommendation to move forward with an agreement with Western States Asphalt to deliver our emulsion this year at $308 a ton. Just for the board's information, I looked it up this morning. And last year, we paid $397 a ton for the same product. So prices have come down considerably.
Wow, that's good.
Is it over there?
No, I don't see it over here.
Is there a pinkie?
Yes.
Well, he's looking for the pinkie. Did somebody want to make a motion on that? I would move approval of Western States bid.
No, at least you know we were looking. All right, I approve the... Move we approve the contract.
He beat you to the motion.
Did he? All right, I was looking for the pinkie second then.
Got a motion in the second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're still up. I know you waited a long time to get up here, so.
Well, you know, I'm not really used to being second, but, you know, obviously I...
Shows I am.
Okay, the next thing that the road department has is during the flooding, the chain link fence around our facility in Stanfield pretty much got destroyed. We went out for quotes and got a local contractor to give us a, what turned out to be a very reasonable price. He was almost half of what the other two that we got were. It was the... And so we had him come replace the fence so that we could secure the facility again. The bill from this company was $5,698.75. And we're just requesting approval for payment of the repairs that he did.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I know he has another issue on there, but since we didn't have any recognitions or celebrations, do you think he can tell us what's happened at the park? Because I think it's pretty good news.
Well, yeah, the park is moving forward very well. We've hit some pretty good licks up there. Chip and Marco have been very diligent in getting things done. The Umatilla Electric, their original estimate was they wouldn't be able to get there until the middle of May. We negotiated with them. They actually got there. We had power a week ago today, actually, a week ago yesterday, we had power in there. Yesterday, Chip made the repairs to the water system, and I think he's power... He's running, operating it today. And we're on track to be in a pretty good position here in another couple of weeks. It's still not going to be the prettiest place around because of all the damage, but it's certainly going to be someplace where, when the governor and the board sees fit to turn us loose, we should be able to start receiving guests and back to some sort of normalcy up there fairly rapidly.
All right.
Any questions about it, or?
No, no, no. I just had heard there was some good news from the park.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's much better. And, you know, we're exceeding our original estimates. Every day, it seems like we move the calendar up by quite a tremendous amount. So it's pretty encouraging.
Okay, well, thank you. You're still up, it looks like. Survey road department payable for a plotter?
Oh, yeah, that was... The survey department plotter went south and was no longer repairable even. We got prices. Actually, Commissioner Murdock signed the agreement for the new plotter. And now, we're just requesting to approve payment of the $8,939 for the new plotter.
Well, I'll make the motion then to justify the signature.
Okay, motions were made in second. In all, in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion's carried. And I think that's it for you.
Well, not quite, because now I get to go help the guy's asphalt because we're shorthanded, so.
If you need any roads inspected, let me know.
Yeah, well, if we're doing our best.
We'd be more than happy to send him your way. So, Tom, you've got a shovel to lean on.
We're actually up paving on the Walla Walla River today. And I think we're going to have a lot of that tied up by the end of the week this week. So we're moving forward on the flood. We're pretty good. So we're in a good place right now.
You have a good shovel to lean on, Tom?
We do, actually. And we can even get one with training wheels on it if necessary.
I didn't know you required them.
We don't, but, you know, there are people out there that might.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Have a good day, gentlemen.
You, too. Okay, number five, controlled access policy.
Good morning Commissioners. Dan Laney, I'm Director of the Ministry of Services. So before you is a controlled access policy, Admin Services Policy Number 12 for being adopted. And the policy is to cover now how we're putting the new controlled access into most of our buildings. And we'll probably, hopefully, adopt this to some of our other smaller outlining buildings eventually, too. So the back of the amended, addendum A is the buildings that we list, which actually covers the courthouse, Stafford Hansel, and the Health Department because they're all on this system here. The access control is to try to get a tighter handle on our security of the building. So we're trying to move to single entry into this building, possibly into other buildings. I don't know there. Like, I'm talking to Stafford Hansel. The other court building might be something that we'll possibly do later down the line. And making sure that access is controlled in the building and we don't have holes in our security. Our biggest problem is people with keys right now. People have keys, people lose keys. And really, to recover that, to make things secure then, we need to rekey. Anytime somebody loses a key, that's the only way you prevent... If you don't know where the key is, to make sure you're secure, you need to rekey, which is a very expensive and time-consuming process for my staff to do. So in a lot of instances, it hasn't been done. The other portion we have is the fob, too. So when somebody leaves with the fob, if we can fob doors when they leave, we can immediately turn off the fob. If they lose their fobs, as long as we're notified, we can immediately turn off that fob. The people leave employment sometime maybe not in the best of terms and don't turn those items in. We can't get the key. We can't do anything about the key, but the fob, we can turn off. The... What this allows, though, is that we are... This policy is we're trying to tighten things down that people are individually responsible for the access to the building, for their fob. We've had departments that had multiple fobs, departments and agencies that they would hand out to people. And so a person loses a fob, they don't tell us, they just go grab one out of the stockpile that they have, and they have another fob. So we don't know if one's lost to some other instance later down the line, that it just happens to find out that it is six months later. That is one instance, something we need to stop, and that's what this policy's trying to prevent. The other part we have is some people have multiple fobs, a fob and a card. If you are in controlled access of one device and you can't get into the building, then you're going to see and let us know that you can't get in the building because that's your only device to get in the building. But if you have two, you lose one, you'll fall back on the other. And some people go, well, I'll talk to IT or Administrative Services next week when I get down to the courthouse. You might be in a building that's off-site or something, or I'm on... And then you forget. And the next thing we know is you've been using the one fob all the time and your card's been lost for six months. How do we know somebody doesn't get to control that? So tightening down security and making sure we know where the fobs are and having only the ones that need to be on instead of having stockpiles of fobs, places that are turned on. There's a lot of tightening here, and there will be some kickback, too, with departments and agencies as we do this. And everybody is responsible for their own fob. And so then there is a charge when that fob gets lost, when it needs to be replaced. And that's something that we can work out. But there's a little leeway on how that works. It says there will be a charge of $10 to replace fobs. And how that's implemented, we will work a little bit more on that. We are trying to work a little bit with state courts because they're one of the ones that have done things a certain way for a long time. And some of that has to change. And some of it, we might be able to compromise and do a little differently, too, than what we have planned here. For instance, I've been talking with Roy and their... State Courts has a bank of extra fobs, and they've been handing them out. And there's been a few instances that a fob has gotten lost, and so they just give one of those fobs out to somebody and we're not told that the other fob was lost. And with their interpreters, who only need access to two doors upstairs, I mean, we can do something with them that we could give them interpreter fobs. And they're only available between the hours of 8:00 and 5:00, or 7:45 and 5:15. But they only work on their doors upstairs, not to get access into the building. So if it's just within their envelope, and that's what they're comfortable about, we can do that. So there's a few tweaking that we're looking at as in implementation of the policy that we can do. Hopefully, I explained that enough. But the policy is effective the beginning of this month. It goes back. We are trying to get people moved over right now, Administrative Services. And on the 24th is our plan to cut over to the new system. So anybody that's not reported to us by then, their fob won't work to get into the building, which they can come through security, through the front door, and then get with us, and we can deal with them then. But there might be a backlog if they don't do this ahead of time, so. Questions?
Dan, I like the idea a lot. I just have a question about the security of the security system in this day and time when someone can walk by you and scan your credit card out of your pocket. How secure is this?
So what the new fobs, things that we put in place are encrypted. And so the cards that you currently have are not. We're going to order some encrypted cards so that they can't scan your number off like they do the current ones that we have. They can. The only problem is the state courts' fobs are not... They're still the old ones. I asked them about, could we replace them to put the encrypted ones in? And they didn't say they had the funding to do that at the time. So if we move to the more secure ones where people can't scan your... Get your number off, the state courts' ones will have to be replaced. Otherwise, they... The fobs won't work on their doors upstairs there. Or they'll have to buy an extra fob for upstairs and then one to get in the... And then use the one that we'll give them to get in the building on that, too. So we are... The equipment we're putting in, the new stuff, is for encryption and stuff to allow that. So we're moving in that direction. But not all of them are there. And once we move in that direction, they have to be all cut over or not. It's... You can't just have half and half. So we have to do something different. But yes, we're trying to address that. Thank you, Commissioner.
I move approval of policy AS-12.0. Got a motion in second. A further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Looks like you're up again.
Thank you, Commissioners. The second one is the ballot printing payable should be with Ryder... See, make sure I got the right one here. Yeah, that's a good one there. So if you can scroll down a little bit, the payables with ballot printing with Ryder Graphics. There we go. And it's for printing out all of our ballots. The primary, especially the presidential primary, is one of our more expensive elections because everybody has different ballot styles for all the different... The Democrats, the Republicans. We're not doing independent this year. But... So we have to have a lot of different ballot styles altogether. And that makes more expense. And plus, we have more voters now. With the motor voter, we're up to about 45,000 registered voters. So we're putting out more ballots than we have before in the past. So it is up a little bit. It's about $19,000 and $235 for payable.
This is a... I'm sure it's a... I think I know the answer to this question, but is this something that has to be printed by this company or are these ballots going to be printed by somebody locally?
Well, one of the things is it has to be printed on the special stock. There's a couple of things here. It's printed on special ballot stock, and it has to be done with a special equipment because they read the tracking on it.
And that's where I thought you were going to go with it.
And then what happens is BMS mailing. So here, four years ago, we tried to change... We redone a lot of things to save time and labor and improve accuracy in the elections office. And one of them is, we used to print all of our envelopes before, and then we would take those ballots and we'd stuff them in there by hand, which took a while to do. And we had to bring some people in. And they're sitting in there stuffing them, and the whole place is a mess down there. And what has happened in the past, that there was a certain percentage of error, that people stuck the wrong ballot style in the wrong envelope. We moved to Ben Mailing Services, which is actually they... Excuse me. Are right next to Ryder Electronics. And what they do is they take those ballots securely and they move them over to Ben Mailing, and they do all the inserting within a few hours. And it's all read with computer eye, and the database for the people are in there. And their error rate is... We have not had any errors, actually, on it. So they go out, and now we don't have the stuffing error that we have where people are getting the wrong ballots sometimes. I mean, it's not a big number that we had, but sometimes there's a few hundred people that got the wrong ballots because they were accidentally mis-stuffed because of human error doing 45,000 ballots. And so doing it there, securely moving it, makes it the best possible way. It does... You do have to be, I think, certified and have to have certain security policies in place to print ballots, too, because we can't just have somebody printing out ballots. Because... So we have to go through certain law... They have to be certified and everything, and certain requirements to make sure they're not going to start printing them and do something with them. And that's... So there's a lot of security involved. Ryder prints basically everybody's ballots in the state of Oregon. And Ben Mailing pretty much mails inserts for most of the counties in Oregon, too.
I move we approve...
I move we approve the payable in the amount to Ryder Election Services in the amount of 19,235.58.
Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Carries. Thank you. It looks like FSSEC comment letter and I believe Bob Walder is on the phone. Bob, can you hear us?
Hey, Commissioners, can you hear me? Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this agenda item before you is for approval of a letter that will go to the Energy Facility Sighting Council for the Nolan Hills Wind Project. Completed a review of their preliminary application for site certificate, which was submitted to FSSEC. Because of the size of the project, this project will be evaluated and approved by FSSEC rather than going through the local county process. However, Yumitilla County is still a cooperating agency, so we have an ability to or we have basically an ability to review the the application and make comments on it and submit those to the Department of Energy. So I put a letter together for the board to consider and I'll just give a quick overview of the project. The Nolan Hills Wind Project is a 350 megawatt project and will include up to 116 turbines, which is dependent on the type of the model of wind turbine they select. This amounts to approximately 48,000 acres near Nolan, so that's the project area, 48,000 It'll also include approximately 99 miles of collector lines that go between the generating generating facility. And then they plan to connect to the grid either by a 230 KV line that's owned and operated by Yumitilla Electric Cooperative or construct a new 230 KV line, which would be owned by the applicant and connect to a future Bonneville Power Administration substation or the Stanfield Substation. So in my review, I noticed a few things that don't comply with Yumitilla County's standard. Probably the biggest is the two mile residential setback from rural residences to turbines. So I've indicated that in our comment letter. There's also, I'm asking for more information about the aggregate that they propose to use and where the source for that aggregate will be, whether or not that's coming from a quarry on the site or if they plan to get the aggregate, a aggregate supplier. So we need some information on that to determine if additional permits will be needed for an aggregate site. Other things that I commented on include I have a little concern over where their water supply is going to come from for the project for construction of footings and using it in concrete, things like that. So in their application, they indicate that they will either get that water from a municipal source such as City of Hermiston or they may work with landowners on a purchase or transfer from Yumitilla River surface water rights. I think our preference would be that they would work with the municipality rather than using water that could otherwise go towards agriculture or natural resources. So I almost commented, I also commented on that. With that, I'll take any questions from the board.
My only question was that two mile setback and you've addressed that already. So Bob, can you?
Yeah, with the
Go ahead.
With the two mile setback, ultimately, at the end of the day, it's up to the discretion of the Facility Siting Council whether or not they feel that the project implies with the statewide statewide planning goals. So even if they don't comply with all the local applicable substantive criteria, the statute does allow some leeway for FSSEC to approve projects if they can otherwise comply with statewide planning goals. So we'll see what their decision is on that, but I thought we at least need to comment that the application that was submitted did not meet our our local criteria.
So Bob, this is a preliminary application that's been filed with FSSEC and they're they are now considering that. Where exactly in their process is this? What happens to it from this point forward? What hearings are held and so on?
Yeah, so it's really about the halfway point in their process, start to finish. It's been about two years now since they submitted their what's called the Notice of Intent, which basically is an overview of the project. And so they they submitted that a couple of years ago and we reviewed that at that time. And now is the preliminary application for site certificate. And based on the review of the cooperating agencies for the county, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, agencies like that, they'll take comments and then address those comments with the applicant. And then from there, they'll move forward with their their final application for site certificate and eventually going for a draft proposed order from the Energy Facility Siting Council. And so all of these different milestones involve a public process that would include hearings at an FSSEC meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you recusing yourself on this one?
Yep.
Chair, I move approval of the comment letter to Oregon FSSEC.
Okay, I'll second that. And we have a recusal, so all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any further discussion? And motion carries. Okay. Thank you, Bob. Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, Compensation Review Committee. Is that you, Doug?
The annual appointment for the Compensation Review Committee is before the board for review. This year, there were two new members that are proposed because the other ones had termed out. George Anderson is the returning one and then Pat Hagan and Molly Tucker Hasenbank are the other two that were proposed. This is an annual appointment and then they make a recommendation to the Budget Committee for the compensation for the elected officials.
I move we adopt order BCC 2020-026.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. And help grants. Is that you, Bill?
Mr. Chair, I sit on that committee, so I'm prepared to present them. The Help Committee, which is the Helix Enhancement Launch Program Committee, which disperses or recommends the dispersal of funding from wind project in the area, met and considered projects as is their custom, they divide their their funding between the city and the school, both of whom have made recommendations for projects within the within each and met with full approval of the committee and are now being referred to the Board of Commissioners for ultimate approval.
Okay. So are you making that motion?
I would make the motion that we approve the grants and adopt order BCC 2020-27.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion carries.
And at the same time, it was learned that the committee is was needing additional appointment, renewal of their appointments. So there are, there's an order before us to reappoint the following, Jack Bascom, Derek Cop, Michael Odman and Gerald Turgeson to the Help Committee. And I would move adoption of order BCC 2020-028.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Supplemental budgets.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Paul, CFO, Yumitilla County. This morning, there are five supplemental budgets before you for consideration. I will give you a summary of those. And so first of all is Budget Order 2020-34. It's for the general county program, which requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of $680,000, an increase in local revenue of $70,000, an increase in personnel services of $40,000, an increase in materials and services of $260,000, an increase in transfers out of $250,000, and an increase in contingency of $200,000. Next, Budget Order 2020-35, Human Services Fund Program SE 63 Pier requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of $28,000, an increase in local revenue of $30,000, an increase in state revenue of $225,000, an increase in personnel services of $38,000, an increase in materials and services of $12,000, and an increase in contingency of $233,000. Next, Budget Order 2020-36, Human Services Fund Program SE 66 Treatment requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of $145,000, an increase in personnel services of $20,000, an increase in materials and services of $107,000, and an increase in contingency of $18,000. Next, Budget Order 2020-37, Human Services Fund Program SE 80 Gambling Prevention requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of $7,000, an increase in materials and services of $1,000, and an increase in contingency of $6,000. And Budget Order 2020-38, Human Services Fund Program 2145 Alcohol and Mental Health Tax requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of $32,000, an increase in local revenue of $1,000, an increase in personnel services of $10,000, and an increase in contingency of $23,000. Those are the five supplemental budgets this morning.
Okay. Well, sees how we don't have any public, oh, let me check phones. Did anybody want to, because we are in public hearing mode, did anybody want to discuss that? Pro or con? Hearing none? Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of Budget Order 2020-34.
Let's go back out of public hearing first.
I thought we had.
Not quite. We're out now. So now you can do it.
Move approval of Budget Order 2020-34.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
You have them all down there.
Move approval of Budget Order 2020-35.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-36.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-37.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-38.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, Budget Transfers.
Commissioners, there are also seven budget transfers before you for consideration this morning. I'll read you a summary. Budget Order 2020-31, General Fund Board of Commissioners, requires a transfer of appropriations not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in personnel services of $15,000, an increase in materials and services of $35,000, and a decrease in contingency of $50,000. Budget Order 2020-32, General Fund Communicable Disease Program, requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in personnel services of $60,000 and a decrease in contingency of $60,000. Next, Budget Order 2020-33, General Fund Health Department, requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $35,000 and a decrease in contingency of $35,000. Next, Budget Order 2020-39, Human Services Fund School Based Mental Health, requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in state revenue of $166,000 and a decrease in transfers in of $166,000. Next, Budget Order 2020-40, Fair Fund, County Fair, requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in personnel services of $15,000 and a decrease in contingency of $15,000. Next, Budget Order 2020-41, Environmental Health, the Onseptic System Program, requires a budget transfer of appropriate to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $13,000 and a decrease in contingency of $13,000. And finally, Budget Order 2020-42, Community Benefit Projects Wind Farm Distribution Program, requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $500,000 and a decrease in contingency of $500,000. Questions?
Hearing none.
Are we ready?
Yep. We've got them again, I think.
Move approval of Budget Order 2020-31.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-32.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-33.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-39.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-40.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-41.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Move approval of Budget Order 2020-42.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motions all carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioners Reports. Mr. Murdoch.
No, no, I just, it's interesting that when the courts closed, we're taking advantage of the opportunity to do some things we couldn't otherwise do.
The Maintenance Department has been very busy lately.
Yeah, because I don't know that when the last time the courts closed for an extended period, we don't remember that.
Wow.
That's been like a one week judicial process.
Wow. Unbelievable.
Do we have to take official action to switch the restrooms?
Yes, we do, don't we?
Yeah. So we're going to get our steps in.
My only comment is with all the proliferation of of COVID-19 materials and the passage of the CARES Act and others very similar acts, I'm really concerned that that information still isn't getting out to the people who need to know it as well as it should with all the information that all the conference calls that are being held for the public as well, that I still hear a lot of comments, well, we're shut down and it's really, really tough out there right now. Well, have you applied for the for the payroll protection program? What's that? People asking questions about the programs that that are out there. In the process right now, putting together a letter that hopefully the Oregonian, East Oregonian might run that would explain some of this so that at least gets out again. Because I really feel our our citizens need to take full advantage of those programs.
I think it worked pretty good when, unfortunately, we can't do that now, but when we had the flooding and we had the large group meeting when all of the entities could be there, it really worked well, but we don't have access.
We don't have the liberty to do that right now.
Sure, sure. No, one of the, I heard on the radio the other day, or maybe it's today, that the banks are getting are getting flooded with personal protection requests.
Payroll protection, yeah.
Yeah, payroll protection, thank you. So.
And, and there's been a lot of confusion. There was some turbulence in, in the rollout of the program because the banks weren't sure how to do that, how to do it. It, it appeared to be a very simple process. Apparently, it wasn't quite as simple when the banks took it on because they had to draw, draft some of their own regulations and procedures for how to do it.
Right.
But I think with the banks doing it, it's still more expedient than.
It is.
Not having the bank.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And it's the fastest I've ever seen any kind of federal funding roll out to, to the general public, to our, to our people on Main Street and, and benefits now coming for farmers. I think it's really important for them to know it.
Yeah.
Did we sign on to the letter for the, supporting the, the fourth, fourth installment where that money goes directly to counties rather than getting lost on the way?
I thought we did, didn't we?
Direct and flexible.
Does that sound familiar to you, Doug?
No, there's been no official action for that.
But we were requested to do it.
Yes, by AOC.
Would we need to take action?
And, and NICO.
Is this now like a letter of support?
Yes.
Yes.
I would think it'd be preferable to have some type of official action.
It's the, it's the statement. It's, it's going out from AOC, but each county is signing on, asking that, that in this particular case, it not be funneled through the states but go to the counties.
So yeah, I think that would.
So move.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Do you have anything else?
No, that takes short.
That motion included that the letter come from the chair.
Yes.
I think it should actually come from the guy from the AOC, our executive officer with AOC.
All three can sign on, yeah.
Yes. The only thing I have is since our last meeting, we've, we did have the Presidential Declaration of Disaster for the floods in February. And just want to remind everybody, the website is disasterassistance.gov. And that's the, the website people can go to to get help from FEMA. And also with, that is a phone number, which is 1-800-621-FEMA or 1-800-621-3362. Normally, what would happen in this scenario is FEMA would come out and do an onsite inspection, but due to the COVID-19, they're doing it virtually. So it's going to be over the telephone and over the internet. So, but those two resources, that phone number and that website are going to be the, the way to get, to get in touch with FEMA. So that's what we need to be pushing out.
Are those going to be on our flood website?
They're on the, they're on the flyers and everything. They're being pushed out, so.
I'm wondering if we ought to put it on our.
I think it might already be.
Okay.
But those, so those are the two resources, so. And that's all I had. So there is nothing else. We are adjourned.